Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call a meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. The mayor's in attendance remotely, but he feels it's appropriate to have meetings shared by somebody in person. That person is me. I'm Paul Mayo, council president. I'd like to inform everybody that I will be voting on agenda items. We'll start the meeting out with the pledge of allegiance. Barb, would you please read the open meeting statement?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Would you take role, please, Barb?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dmitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Would you start the staff introductions, please?
Barb Nowak, city clerk.
Aaron Johnson, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
And we have Josh Werner in the control room. Next up, we have the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a collection of a number of items that we approve with one vote. If anybody would like an item moved off the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda, now is the time to request that. Hearing none, I would need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Aye.
Moved by Olson, second by Nagel, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the regular agenda. There are no additions, and as such, I'd need a motion and a second to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Velicker, to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We have no announcements and correspondence, which leads us to public input. If anybody in the audience, staff or council, has some public input, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes or less, and the input must be on non-agenda items. This is going quick.
I'm just gonna check. Mayor, I see you have a little emoji up there, raising your hand. Did you mean to do that?
No, no, I didn't. I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. Just checking.
Okay, we'll move to NMB unfinished business. We only have one item. Ordinance number 14-2024 and ordinance amending 17.102 zoning district maps as allowed for under 17.700. This is the second reading. Aaron.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. This is a zoning change. Bring us to the correct page. So the ordinance starts on page 34 of your packet. This is out by the airport, so just north of the airport, it's this triangular-shaped parcel. It was industrial, or I-1. It is being recommended to be changed from I-1 to R-1. This does meet the future land use map. It's consistent with that, which is low-density residential. From a staff standpoint, we're just expecting, it's been communicated with us, that just a single-family home is going there. The footprint has been showed to us. It meets all setbacks, but of course, that would all come at a later time. So this is the second reading. Meets everything. Staff would be recommending approval of this zoning change from I-1 to R-1.
Thank you, Aaron. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Olson, second by Hagan, to approve ordinance number 14-2024 and ordinance amending 17.102 zoning district map as allowed for under 17.700. Any discussion? Barb, would you please take a roll, call vote.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. New business. First item is contract to raise and restore the property at 113 Omen Street. Aaron.
Thank you again, President Mayo. So we are on page 46 is the start of this memo. This is a memo that outlines a proposal to contract with SNS Excavating to raise the structure at 113 Omen Street, which is a residential structure. This is something that we've, you've heard probably surface-level information on in the past couple of months. Little background, this is a property since 2021 in which staff has been working with the property owner on. There has been a number of code violations, and actually, at one point in 2022, I believe it was, we did hire Falk's Brothers to go and clean up the property, placed that on the tax bill, and it was fully recovered at that time. Since that time, it's fallen into a state of disrepair. Actually, there is nobody that is, it is really uninhabitable. No one living there at this time. It is our understanding they're living in a different house in that neighborhood. Actually, at one point, the city worked with both the police department and public health at the county to communicate that it was no longer inhabitable. You can see here, there are some highlights, or I should say, some main points. There's been no running water in over two years at that property. It was requested at the time, two years ago, from the property owner to turn off the water. Bathroom's not functional. There's a major hole in the roof. We've got major floor and plumbing failure, glass missing out of the windows, exterior facade and roof disrepair with junk and debris scattered throughout that property. There are pictures illustrating all of those conditions as attached to this memo, and due to all of that, there has been a raise order that has been drafted and actually delivered. That was done by our attorney, Attorney Sorensen. Attorney Sorensen is actually on his way tonight. In case you had any questions for him, he did call me right before this. He had a family emergency. Expect him here in five or 10 minutes. But you can see here, we did recently, in the month of December, solicit bids from, actually, we sent it out to six different contractors in the area. We received two back. You can see those two, SNS Excavating and Falk's Brothers Construction. So SNS Excavating was the low bid, and that is what we're recommending for this work. And then on top of that, so they do cover testing for asbestos as a part of that bid that you see, the $21,200. What's not covered is the actual removal of the asbestos. So we are recommending a 10,000, not to exceed $10,000 allowance for that removal. We don't expect it to be that much, and if it is above that, we would come back to city council. We would not proceed until we had that conversation again. This right now is being proposed to be funded out of general fund reserves, and then it would be placed on the property owner's tax bill and expect to be recovered through that. If it is not recovered, then that person, that property owner would be delinquent in taxes. The county would start going through the foreclosure process and eventually would take ownership of the property if that was the case, and it could be remarketed, resold for development at a future time. You can see, going back to the, how we're financing this, or paying for it, I should say, this is, again, general fund reserves. At the last, at the end of the last audit, we were sitting at 30.7% of annual expenditures. As a reminder, we have a policy that says we should be between 20 and 25% at the end of 2024. Without having the audited numbers, it looks like because of interest proceeds, as well as a record year for building inspection revenue, building permit revenue, we are looking to be north of $200,000 to the positive, so we would, we would add to that percentage. But that's an approximate at this time, because audited numbers are not confirmed. But because of those reasons, we feel comfortable executing this contract with that general fund reserve money. And with all of that, I guess the recommendation would be that city, that the city of Opaque approved the contract with SNS Excavating for the raising and restoration of 113 Omen Street with an allowance to remove the asbestos, not to exceed $10,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Scott. Aaron, in the, in the case that the county would get that property back, and then they would probably market it somehow, would we be the first in line to get our costs back for raising it, or how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, typically, the county does work with us on those properties to, where we take control at times and then can potentially market it and sell it. I can tell you that to think that we would get the cost back on this particular property would, if there was none that was recouped, would be, it's not likely. So I would say, you know, either, either that property owner does pay when it's put on those bills, or, or we would be eating a large portion of it. That's the likely scenario.
So you use the word raise. The house is gone, the foundation is taken out and filled, and then it's left with a green lot or dirt lot?
That is correct.
So, so if the county were foreclosing the property, they're just basically getting the land?
Yes.
Or the property owner maintains the land?
Correct.
And then somebody is free to buy or develop the property again?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Henry.
The, I'm sorry, the, the property taxes are current on it?
They are, yes.
Well, that's interesting. Normally, they're totally delinquent, right? And then the county takes it back, and they, they make us whole every year on our taxes, and then they would just keep it. It's interesting.
They are current, and, and again, a couple of years ago, there was a cleanup that was done, in which a $5,000 charge was put on that tax bill, and, and we recovered all of that. So there's some, some history there.
Does the individual that owns this property, is there any statement that they want to make? I mean, if they're paying the taxes?
No, short answer is not that. No, not that I'm owning.
Okay. I can tell you, that's really close to my house, and I've walked up there, and it, it looks way worse than what it is on those pictures. I mean, it's, it's abandoned, and there's a hole in the roof. I mean, it's, though.
It's going to be a definite health hazard nuisance if it's not taken down by someone for animals and vermin and whatever.
I saw the house this afternoon. It's awful.
Yeah.
The description doesn't do it justice. Henry.
Yeah, I'm sure the neighborhood would really appreciate it, and I just wonder, because of all the contacts of us not taking action, if that somehow leaves us open to some exposure because, because of a health risk. I, yeah.
And what, I don't know if you were referring to this, Henry, but just to bring to city council's attention, if they've not seen it, on page 52, there is a timeline of events and city contact with this property, starting in June of 2021, and you can kind of see through, through about today.
I would make, I'm sorry.
Are we ready for, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna question, perhaps, Justin, or, or he might be knowledgeable about it. They've talked about taking the house down and the structure and the foundation. How do you disconnect it from the utility supplies that it's connected to now? And is there a cost for that that's not borne in this bid? And also, some of that would be the cities, because we have the sewer and water, and I assume, but maybe the gas is also a fee, and is that something additional that will come?
So the gas, gas is a different company. It's a private company, along with electrical. So those companies would have to be contacted by the awarded company. Sewer and water is not going to be much of a fee. I mean, that's, that's us. They're already shut off, to my knowledge. It would just be a matter of this excavator, while they're working, digging down, finding those utilities, and then safely disconnecting them underground with our utility personnel on site. So as far as that goes, I don't see much of a cost. I cannot speak for the gas company, electric company. There may be a cost that they pass on, and if so, I mean, we can.
I can actually speak to that. So that is a part of the raise permit process. So this contractor, SNS Excavating, would apply for the raise permit, work with our building inspectors to make sure that's done appropriately, but that's all a part of the bid.
So it's not something that'll come up later as an extra fee?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Dmitri.
Have we identified a contractor, or are we soliciting bids for the asbestos?
So they have a contractor that they will work with. That is, I think it's, I think, I can't remember. I think it's about $1,500 or something, and it's built within that $21,200.
Yeah, so the $1,500 was for testing, right?
For testing, yeah. And then, and then they would go out and they would coordinate that in communication with us as far as the work to be done to remove it. So to answer your question, no, that company has not been selected at this point.
So if, if we pass this tonight, then SNS will receive the funds and do the testing. What happens if it comes back more than $10,000, and we decide, well, that's too much? It's like, let's leave it, and then can we get the money back from SNS that they didn't spend on the rest of the excavation?
So that's not how this is written necessarily. We would be very surprised if it came back over $10,000, which is probably why we would want to come back to city council, because that'd be abnormal. Yeah, I, would we halt it? I, I'm not sure I can speak to that. I would say, my opinion, probably not, but it depends on what that number is.
Yeah.
So I think this is a number we feel very comfortable with covering that removal and speaking with some people that deal with this on a regular basis.
I used to be a licensed contractor to remove asbestos, and it's, there's a lot of work. They're gonna have to set up containment all the way around the outside of the house, and wear special suits, and then they're gonna have to double-bag it and dispose of it and improve land site and stuff, so I wouldn't be surprised if it's over $10,000.
Yeah, I, I hope not.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you could make a motion, if comfortable, to do up to 15, if you wanted to. This is just in speaking with our building inspector that is somewhat familiar with this. I think he has an idea of where he believes that asbestos to be and how much, and then in speaking with the contractor, so. With, actually, really, the number that we've talked about, it may be likely, is at least what they thought, from what they saw, was around that $5,000 to $6,000 mark.
Okay, anybody else?
So does this, oh, it's have a basement?
Yes, and the floor goes into the basement. That's one of the safety issues. There's a hole in the floor.
Hole in the floor, too?
Yeah.
So does the owner have everything out of there that he wants out of there, then?
We will work that out with that, with the property owner on that.
Okay. And then I was also wondering, are there any houses that are in the process of this same type of thing in the city? This is the only one we know?
This is the only one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract to the raising of 113 Omen Street to the low bidder that was provided in our packet. It was $21,000 some with an allowance of up to $10,000 for any kind of asbestos abatement that might be required, or hazardous material abatement that might be required. And I would ask that at some point, the staff, when this is done, just, you know, double-bag with the council and just close the loop on all the costs of that.
Yeah.
When it's all done.
Second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Peterson, that we award the contract to raise and restore the property at 113 Omen Street to SNS Excavating for $21,000 and change, and for asbestos removal, not to exceed $10,000. Any more discussion? Okay, Barb, roll call vote, please.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Item two is Eco Park Playground and Bathroom Fundraiser Proposal. Laura.
Thank you. You can find my memo on page 71. Essentially, Eco Park has been open since 2015, and at that time, there has been a playground and a shelter. Those were built by local volunteers, and our playground especially is showing its, its wear and tear, and it's really time to consider replacing that playground. It's a swing set, and then just some jumping stones and stumps in the ground. I've been meeting with the stakeholder group, really, a lot of times in 2022, and they have voiced that they want to keep the playground as natural as possible and as an educational park as much as possible. So we were looking at different natural playgrounds, which I'll show you pictures of here in a second. Essentially, the neighborhood over there is almost full, as well as the incoming new builds over in River North. So we are gonna have a very large influx of people moving into that area, so it's important to make sure that that park is, is meeting the needs of our community members. It's not right now, and it's not a very rentable shelter, because there's no running water, and there's no bathrooms out there that are plumbed, so people just use a porta potty. We are looking to fundraise for water, sewer, electrical, playground, and a bathroom for Eco Park. Right now, our friends of Opaque Parks have voted to put $25,000 towards this project, which is great, and I've been speaking with a grant writer about applying for the Land Water Conservation Grant through the DNR, and we think that this might be a possibility of achieving, depending on how much money we can get between now and May of '25. So if you go to page 72, you can see some photos of these natural playgrounds. Josh Peterson and I went through central Wisconsin. We went to Nina and Ripon and Montello, and we saw a few playgrounds. The one in the middle from Ripon has a zip line. And then on page 73, this is John Muir Park, south of Montello. They have a climbing wall with some, some rock holds, and this is built on a hill. It's, it's a really, really incredible park, and this one costs $75,000. So it's, it's more affordable than your average playground as well. It's built with black locust wood, which is very tough wood that is like cedar and that it doesn't rot, so it does last a lot longer than any other wood that you might find in the area. So the packet, the fundraising packet that we've put together starts on page 74. There are some quotes from local community members, residents of the neighborhood, Eco Park students, or students that have gone out there for environmental days, like CEC fourth graders, and then talks a little bit about Friends of Opaque Parks. The project background on page 76 is where I'm at right now. And then some of our goals and objectives. We really want to provide an accessible and safe playground. The playground itself might not be like the one at Swan Park where we can put wheelchairs on the playground, but we want to build ADA paths that will take you around it, and then maybe do some swings and stuff like that, so we can still meet some ADA complacency needs. And then on page 77, you can see our, our three-phased plan. So what you see in yellow is very simple. It's the bathroom and the playground area. The bathroom is the little square up above, and then the, the other circular is the playground. In blue, you'll see phase two. So that's an, an expansion of the parking lot, and then a potential open-air shelter, which could also be rented. So we could have two potential rentable shelters there. And then stage three will have an additional parking lot if needed, plus some expansion on the trails through the park. On page 78, we have the first phase with some estimates on what the work might cost. So earthwork demolition, 20, 20 grand; water, sewer, 25 grand; electrical, 15; playground, we went on the high end at 100,000; ADA path, again, 100,000; and bathrooms, 175. We would go with a similar model bathroom that we have at Swan Park, which is that concrete build, which is low, low, low maintenance, because we don't want to add too much onto the plates of our already very busy parks crew. And that total will come to about 435,000. We are not fundraising for phase two and three right now. If we get a ton of money, obviously, we could move into phase two and three, but right now, our goal is going to be the 435. As mentioned, we'd like to start fundraising as soon as possible through this year, hoping construction could start next summer of '26, and our grand opening might be as soon as the fall of '26, depending on, on what we all need to do and the timeline of the construction. And then the donor packet is, or the donor form is the last page on the packet, sorry, second to last page. The last page shows different donor levels that you can achieve based on your donations. So I'm just requesting to be able to move forward with fundraising for Eco Park.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions for Laura? Comments? All right, I'd be looking for a motion and a second to.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by who? Henry? Second by Velicker, to approve the fundraising, fundraising proposal for Eco Park Playground and Bathroom. Any more discussion? Barb, please call a roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item three, Bowlby Lift Station Design Services Agreement. Justin.
Thank you. My memo starts on page 81 of the packet with information behind it to page 122. So this is seeking design services for our Bowlby lift station. So we did a preliminary study on this lift station in 2024. We used a consultant at that time called McMahon Associates out of Nina in the wastewater, I guess, projects. We've used McMahon a few times in the past. We've had really good success with them, and what we're looking to do is to continue on, get full design plans, get them ready for a bid set this coming fall/winter, and then in 2026, reconstruct this lift station. I've talked about this before, probably pretty briefly to council, but a number of times, and pretty in-depth to water and sewer. It was at that board today at 1:00. They made a recommendation to council to go with McMahon Associates for the mount that is shown. We did get two proposals to compare. McMahon came in at $258,300 strand. Another company we do quite a bit of work with came in at $275,000. And again, both companies we've worked with in recent years have won projects in a competitive process and have done solid work for us. So what this would truly do is we'd go in agreement with McMahon. We would start on the design process of rebuilding this lift station. We would reinstall the forest main that goes from the bottom of the hill up to Bailey Street or. or Smith Street around the corner. We are going to install some new gravity mains adjacent to the lift station. There's a few lots nearby that are privately owned, or one is privately owned, the other is owned by the city, so we could extend service there. And then we are going to also loop a water line. So, the water main stops just behind the Woods Mall, and then again, up on the hill just east of Old Churney Cheese, so we're going to finish that water loop. So, all those things would be designed with this effort. We have some concern on procurement lead times, the lift station itself, much like we had with the airport project, it's, we're expecting it to be about a full year. Aaron, if you could go to page one sixteen and potentially one seventeen. We're going to do what we planned as an underground station, so what's shown there is a steel tube with a, basically a room at the very bottom, so you would go in that door and eventually that would be filled in, and you could just walk straight in, go down a bunch of ladders, and then at the bottom of the steps is where the pumps and components are. On the opposite side of that metal cage, so people would be on the inside, we'd have a concrete tank where that would hold the sewage. So, this is the preferred method to pump because the water is at the level of the pumps, and it makes it much easier versus having it at the surface, and the pumps have to lift the water twice, basically up to the pump and then again up to the hill. So, this, this type of configuration is very similar to what we're going to have installed at the airport, and again, it's going to take about a month lead time, so we need to get going on the design and get this thing ordered this summer. Besides that, the other thing we're worried about is just a backup generator, slightly less lead time, so it still can be in the realm of six to nine months. So, I'll just open it up to questions, comments. Otherwise, I'll just kind of recap. We're looking for approval to go in agreement with McMahon Associates out of Nina for a mount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars with funding supported by sewer revenue bonds.
Any questions or comments? Henry?
Well, this is in our capital plan, and we're just proceeding through, and we budgeted how much in our capital?
We had a pretty comfortable number in here of seven hundred thousand for design, so that was a couple of years ago, we, before the feasibility study, when we had less of an idea of how we're going to accomplish it, so.
Going in the right way?
Justin, I forgot to ask today at water sewer meeting, but you have an option one and an option two on here for force main. Is that going to be decided at the time of the design gets all finalized by the you and the McMahon?
Um, yeah.
Or is it out the window?
Well, we've pretty much come to the conclusion, the existing route is the best route. We, just for everyone's knowledge, we looked at two different routes. One, it went around the corner up to Smith Street, and the other one went, I guess, straight east down the Smith Street right away to the intersection of Morton Street, and that is, that alignment just has more head loss and more, would incur more pumping power and cost, so.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else? Oh, Colin.
This capsular, I don't know, what word, do you use contraption, I'll say. Is that prevent water from infiltrating it, the groundwater? So, you're going to put this underground right next to where there's, what do you call it, Duck Lake?
Grass Lake.
Grass Lake. And is the water from that lake going to infiltrate this facility? Maybe that's a better word.
Correct. No, it should not. It should be watertight.
Okay. And then my second question is, the building that's there now, what are you going to do with that?
That's going to get demoed.
Sure looks like a bathroom.
You want walks much down there?
I was going to say, can you move it for Laura?
It's an, it's an older masonry building. There's not much service life in it.
That was sort of a joke, I guess. I'm sorry. If it's not serviceable, we'll get rid of it. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for engineering services to McMahon and Associates for approximately two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the design of the Bowlby Lift Station on the Smith Street bypass.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Velicker, second by Dykstra, to award the Bowlby Lift Station Design Services Agreement to McMahon and Associates for two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Any more discussion? Please take, take a roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item four, Elm Street Construction Bid and Contract Award. Justin, you're up again.
Yeah, so this one continues on in the packet of one-twenty-three. Do we have people online, Aaron?
Yeah, we do. Yep.
I may have skipped somebody. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We had Chad Olson from McMahon Associates online, in case you guys had questions. I think we're past that item though, so apologize, Chad. But the next item.
No problem.
The next item, we have another consultant online, Matt Stefan from Cedar Corp. Again, if you guys have questions for him. So, this is Elm Street Construction Bid and Contract Award, so this has already been designed, it already went out to bid, we'd had a bid opening, we received six bids in a range of like one point zero, one point zero seven million to one point five million. The lowest few were within our budget, so a table of where our budget was and where the bids came in is shown at the bottom of the memo there, broken down between the various funds. So, street items gets paid through general obligation, sewer and water is through revenue bonds of those utilities. So, you can see that breakdown, and if, right now, what I'm looking for is awarding this to Advanced Construction out of Green Bay, as they are the lowest responsible bidder. I'm not asking for a contingency at this time. We, we know we're going to have a change order forthcoming, we've had to make a couple plan changes. What has happened is we had a couple of meetings with the DNR after the project was, the bid opening occurred, so if you could go to page one forty, Aaron, please. The plan was to, of course, widen the road and then eliminate the beam guard in the section of Elm Street, and also to make the slopes off the road much more gentle, so if you were to go off the road with a car, you could slide to a safe halt. Now, we got flagged. The south side of Elm Street is just fine, there was no concerns from the DNR there, but the north side, they had numerous concerns of filling in that wetland. So, wetland is shown in that teal color, and the hashed area is where the fill will go. So, you can see on the north side, there's not a whole lot. That is after a number of meetings with them, and then we scaled that back. The south side, we will be filling in quite a bit, and like I said before, there's little concern on that side from the DNR. When we had to pull this back, our slopes got steep again, and we had to thus reinstall the beam guard, so we are in the process of making changes and working through some numbers, but what that means is the beam guard is going back in just on the north sides, we have to add that to the project, and that was not a bid item. But while we did that, we were able to eliminate a number of items here. We had concrete curbing gutter, we had a couple inlets, so as we took away the concrete items, add the beam guard, you know, there's a balance there. We think it's going to come in pretty close to net zero change, but we're still kind of working through that. It is not to the point of a concern where I think it's going to be an overrun and will be over budget, and is thus why I'm recommending approval to Advanced. And as, excuse me, as we work through this change order, if it comes to the amount where I have to come back for additional approvals, then I, I will, I'm ready and willing to do that. So, a general overview of the project, if you could scroll up a page, Aaron, I will try and make this as concise as possible. Zoom out. So, starting at Highway forty-nine or North Harrison Street, the project will, will start there and head to the east towards Wapaca Foundry. We will put in two driving lanes and then a widened shoulder on both sides of the road, and it kind of varies as the trail picks up halfway down the road. We are extending sewer to the, that's the green line, so if you go down a page, Aaron, the other way. The green line, that's all brand-new sewer from Wesley Street to the west. Keep going, please. So, as we, as we have now all these bid numbers, we'll be looking at creating an assessment process, doing the whole public notification resolution, and then working through the project and applying those assessments after the project is over. So, if you keep going. Water main, we have two water mains there, there's a four-inch and a ten-inch. We are abandoning the four and then putting in brand-new laterals off the ten-inch, and we'll be removing some lead goosnecks as that process occurs. The sewer to the east of Wesley will just get relined, so there's an existing sewer there, and it's a non-excavation type process. We did it on Granite Street. It's very convenient and very little traffic impact there. Continue a little further. Keep going. When we get to Holback Street, we had that leak underneath the railroad tracks during design phase, we added that to the bid. Keep going, one more. One more, please. Right there. So, we'll be, we hired this out because we did, we did not have the capability to dig next to the railroad tracks and fix that leak, so we're just going to replace that. Again, it's a four-inch line, replacing it with eight. It's going to get bored underneath the tracks there and replace the pavement as we go. So, we're looking at a construction schedule of getting basically replaced sometime this spring slash summer. We have to get the contractor on board, we'll do a public meeting very soon here, I'm shooting for like a February public informational meeting, then a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and then we will find out when the construction schedule is, so that is the project in a nutshell. Again, this was at water sewer earlier today, and they recommended approving the funds from the water and sewer utilities. And I guess council needs to approve the overarching project along with all of the funding from the various sources.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions or comments? Corey?
Justin, does this have any, have any impact on that Wesley Street railroad crossing? It's kind of a weird, bumpy, or is that not our thing to touch?
No, well, we do, we will stay far enough away from the railroad crossing that it will not have an effect. If we get, there is a line there, there is a railroad right away. If we encroach onto that, that is a different process, we have to get additional permitting, additional cost, so we will stay far enough away where we're not going to really touch the crossing part of it, but the stub of the road leading up to it, yes.
Just second question, then. It looked like there was a railroad crossing at some point on Holback Street. Why was that ever taken out?
That was removed a number of years ago. That was like a process the city went through with CN. I believe that was like a hazard mitigation where there was, there's another one over by Nemus, same thing, where if you eliminated a crossing, I think the city got money for it.
That was a, that was a situation where we wanted to add a railroad crossing, and we kind of swapped it.
Oh. Thank you.
Anybody else? Colin?
Is the, the sewer and water lines that you're putting in larger than the ones that are there now?
Sorry, Colin, what was that?
That's okay. Are the sewer and water lines that we're putting in larger than the ones that are in there now? And the reason I'm asking it, would it support any development farther into the, I don't know what that rest of the roads are, but past Wesley, et cetera? I don't know if that's the way any sewers in there would flow, but would it support that if that were ever developed in the lifetime of this sewer line?
So, utilities are not getting larger, with the exception of where sewer is going in brand-new, that's going from no line to an eight-inch line, which should support development to the west where that vacant parcels are. The water line is already a ten-inch, so that's plenty good. And the existing sewer, we're just maintaining and relining just to kind of re-strengthen. As far as capacity, what we've seen is very low there, so I would not expect it reaching capacity by the time it needs to be replaced again.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve awarding the Elm Street Construction Contract to Advanced Construction incorporated of Green Bay for an amount not to exceed one million, seventy-three thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Any more discussion? Colin?
I had one more question I forgot to ask. You had talked about some changes that might happen, and that for this bid particularly, there'd be approximately a net zero change.
Yep.
I didn't look at the other, the second bids, I don't know that they're in here. Would, have you looked as at if the number two bid, doing those same changes, would become a low bid if the numbers they used in their bid were used accordingly? It's kind of a complicated question, but maybe you understand it.
Yes, so we did consider that, I mean, whenever there is a, I guess I would say a significant change in the bids are close, one, two, maybe three, that has to be considered, but that's, we don't think that's going to be the case on this one.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any more discussion? Barb, roll call vote, please.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
Item five is License Report Number one seven zero four Operators License or Bartenders Licenses. Any issues, Barb?
No.
Okay. We're looking for a motion in a second to approve License Report Number seventeen zero four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Was that you, Dimitri?
Yep.
Okay. Moved by Martin, second by Nagel, to approve License Report Number one seven zero four Operators Licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item six is License Report Number seventeen zero five Dance Hall Licenses. Nothing? Okay. Motion in a second, please.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Velicker, second by Peterson, to approve License Report Number one seven zero five Dance Hall Licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item seven, License Report Number seventeen zero six Taxi Cab Drivers Licenses. No issues, I assume?
No.
I'd need a motion in a second to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Velicker, to approve License Report Number one seven zero six Taxi Cab Drivers. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have no issues of project discussion. Item E is Communications and Recommendations of the Mayor. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thanks, Paul. I really don't have anything tonight, so have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hagan, second by Olson, to adjourn. Moved by Hagan, second by Olson, to adjourn until our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, January twenty, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. We are adjourned at six fifty.